Good evening, everyone. Going to call the meeting of the Auburn School Committee, February 5th, 2025, to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll start down here on my right with introductions.
Dan Poishon, Ward 5.
Corinne McWigan, Ward 1.
Pam Hart, Ward 2.
Pamela Albert, at large.
Sue Dora, Superintendent.
Pat Guardia, Ward 3.
Jay Rich, at large.
Adam Platts, City Council Representative.
Calvin Vincent, Student Representative.
Amanda Cooter, Business Manager.
Scott Aneer, Assistant Superintendent.
All right, thank you. And Quinn Gormley and Connor Dufour were excused tonight. They could not be here. So we're going to start with the approval of our consent agenda, which includes the approval of tonight's agenda, as well as the approval of the minutes of the January 22nd, 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion? Corinne, second Pat. All those in favor. Consent agenda is approved. Does not look like we have anyone here for public participation tonight. So we are going to move right into our presentation on the Donald M. Gay Performing Arts Center and Event Coordinator Update. Welcome, Lilly.
Hi, guys. How's it going? So I'm just here to give a brief update of how things have been going in the past six months since I've been hired. I just want to start by acknowledging the support of the school business department, specifically Amanda. You've helped me so much. The music department, Bill Buzza, and Public Works for helping me launch the DMG to the public. So we've had a lot of things going on in the past month. We've hosted around 38 events and counting at the school. For our estimate audience count, in 2024, we had just under 10,000 people in the school. 2025, we're looking at around 2,400 so far, meaning that we have welcomed a total of 12,000 visitors to the auditorium so far, which has been phenomenal. The types of events we've been having at the DMG include the school productions and concerts. We've had some outside rentals, some dance recitals, conferences, concerts, and some special events, like some fundraisers and ceremonies of such. Couple of notable high attendance events and successes. We just had the Vocal II Festival this weekend, which was phenomenal. Largest crowd yet. We filled the auditorium with 1,100 people. We also had a total of 377 students in the cafeteria watching a live stream. So it was a lot of people on site this Saturday, which was great. Upcoming, at the end of this month, we have Odyssey of the Mines Maine. We're projected an audience count of 1,500 people, and I think they have over 99 teams participating this year. And then we have Cinderella coming up soon. They're doing about three shows, but each show they're predicted around like 600 to 800 people. So it's a couple of fun things coming up in the community soon. Got some great upcoming clients and bookings in 2025. Some of these are returning clients, and some of these are new organizations wanting to rent the space. The Dance Center and LA Ballet are going to be doing multiple productions throughout the school year. Got Main State Music Theater for their extended rental period, which is going to be at the end of the summer, which we're super excited about. Odyssey of the Mines Maine. Maine Special Olympics Winter Games is coming up. We've got some regional church meetings, which have been a good success. Clients such as Auburn Community Band, Grace Center of Movement, Midcoast Symphony, Meme Festivals, Miss Maine, Girl Scouts. It keeps going on. We've got a lot of people interested and a lot of either dates that are secured in the books, or we're kind of talking with these people. And then a bunch of continued school concerts going on. Upcoming, to support it on everyone's agendas, we have the Honors Concert coming up. We've got a Grade 4 through 8 concert at the end of February, which would be nice, and a UMaine collaboration. And then the school play this year is The History of Dating, which I heard is a very hilarious school comedy. So that will be coming up soon. We've done some facility and technology enhancements at the DMG. So we have a website, which is under construction, which the QR code is linked there if anyone wants to have a peek. The space is dedicated for the PAC. It's going to help us develop and streamline rental inquiries, inquiries, event listing, and ticketing. And then we also collaborated with High Output, who designed our AV to build out a tech sheet. This is a comprehensive document. It outlines all the light, sound, stage dimensions, AV capabilities, blueprints, you name it. It was, took weeks to build out and a lot of people to make it happen. But this is just available for more professional renters like Main States that they can put on their high school productions, which is great. We're looking at some marketing opportunities coming up. We've been regularly attending networking events, working with the LA Metro Chamber. We've got the website build out, social media build out. We are placing an ad in the Explore and Discover Guide, which we're super excited about, a half-page feature for people to rent the DMG. Working on some marketing assets, such as posters, scannable QR code, flyers. We've been doing a lot of live audience promotions. So every single time someone comes and has an event, I ask, I give them a speech at the start of the event. So all of those 12,000 people have been spoken to about renting the space or sponsoring a seat or the auditorium. And then working on some more press releases about the space and its capability. Recent press, to date, we have around six articles naturally come in, mainly from the Sun Journal. I do want to thank them for all these images that you see on our website and in the presentation. So that's been exciting. The buzz is going on naturally for us. Couple of challenges that I've had to address, high demand for rental rates. There's a need to just balance the school and outside events. So that's been challenging, but we've overcome ways to deal with that. Continued maintenance and upkeep, so just continuing to ensure that the facility remains in top condition. It takes a lot of work, but it's a challenge I'm ready to take on. Some great improvements recently. We've updated the policy, which is going to help us ensure some sustainability for the future. I'm looking at ways to fund and sponsorship the space. So all of the 1,200 seats have a tiny place for a gold plaque. And each of those plaques, we sponsor for about $500. So I'm just trying to get that out into the community, that people can name a seat for a loved one or sponsor as a business. I'm also kind of thinking about some yearly sponsorship opportunities where businesses could pay a sponsorship fee, which will just help add to the restoration fund, which we've set in place to essentially replace any equipment or things that will break 10, 20 years down the line. We've been working on some community partnerships, not necessarily with them renting, but them collaborating with the school. So I've been in talks with the Public Theater and Midcoast Symphony Orchestra on how they can come to the school, use our space, and do some things with the kids, which is great. I recently explored that we have projection mapping at the DMG, which is incredible. We are still finalizing the software for this, but our first trial run with the projection mapping is going to be for Cinderella. Essentially, it gives you the ability to perform in front of a projection, without the projection screen going on your body, which is amazing because it breaks down the need for big set builds. It's super cool. So that's going on. Just wanted to show you guys this video. It's brought to you by Mr. Amorosa's Ever Little High School Photography Team. And now I can't see. There we go. My focus on the next six months, expanding outreach and partnership opportunities. I'm going to be wrapping up the website, launching the social media platform. And then obviously, we have some big events coming up, so just welcoming and hosting these new clients. But that is it for now for my update. If you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you so much. This has been, this is definitely something like an absolute jewel in our community. And I'm so glad that we have you at the helm, Lilly, to really make it shine because it's such a beautiful and such a wonderful thing to have. My daughter was in drama and, you know, music and all of this stuff. And to know that parents have this to go to, to see their child shine is incredible. So thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you.
Jay.
I echo that. Also, a friend of mine is the choir director at Oxford Hills, and I saw him on Sunday. And he was talking all about what a state-of-the-art facility this is, how well-run it was, and just big kudos to you and your staff and everything. I love that we're getting some good feedback from other communities as well.
It's great to see the space being used so much. Adam.
Thanks. Great presentation, Lilly. My question, so I have no doubt that you're going to fill up every free day and weekend available in that facility at some point in the future. So my question is, when that happens, do we have a, how do we plan to give priority to school event? Like, as far as, how do people book? Is there a price difference if you're a for-profit or a non-profit? How do we protect those spots for schools and drama and music and stuff like that?
Yeah, this is actually like a challenge that we ran on too early on was that the school calendar gets released once a year. A lot of people are trying to book for 2026, 2027, 2028. And it's like, hold on, I can't do that because I obviously don't know what's going to be happening with the school. So we implemented a new strategy like a couple of months ago. I just call it placeholding. So instead of people booking and contracting immediately, we put a first hold on their date, and then they have the right for first refusal. So if anyone else tries to take that date, they can't. It's theirs first. And what happens is I contract for the clients in May now, because around April time is when the school will release their calendar. And around the same time, I should get calendars and dates from the music department, from the theater, the play and musical. So at that point, I reach out to my clients after we see that there's no conflicts. All those people that had first hold on those dates, we then contract, and then they are signed for that date. So it kind of is, a lot of the people do have to wait, but their names are in the calendar, they're on the first hold. We just can't contract essentially until May of each year. So that's our new strategy for avoiding that issue because it has become one.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you. So we're going to move on to full plates, full potential, and Lilly is going to provide us an update on that.
Yes, so this is the grant that we received earlier this year, the School Food Systems Innovation Grant by the USDA. And with that, we have created our project, which is the School-Based Food Hub. So a quick reminder of what the grant is. We, our purpose is to increase local food sourcing, support farms, and integrate farm foods into the school cafeterias, with our main goal being to strengthening the local food system while improving nutritious meals to students. Chris isn't here today, unfortunately. He was sick. He would be right by my side here. But I am the new project coordinator for the grant. So shortly after getting hired on for the DMG, I got a little email from HR saying, hey, there's another part-time job opportunity. And I applied, and I was successful. So it's fantastic to now be employed with Auburn School Department almost full-time. So that is why I'm here, switching gears and talking to you about school nutrition and our School-Based Food Hub. So the school nutrition department in Auburn has been working incredibly hard to implement some farm foods into the school. So far, we have, in school year 25, indirectly ordered from 23 different farms within a 50-mile radius from our schools. And we've been doing this through our partnerships with aggregators. And these include our grant partner, Blackie's Farm Fresh, a sub-grantee Peak Season, a grant supporter Farm Drop, and also Native Maine. Also, since the start of the school year, we've started forming more direct farm relationships. And we have about six direct relationships. And these are farmers within 30 miles of the school, so they're a lot closer to us. And these relationships are special because we're not going through Blackie's or Native to go to them. We, basically how we started the relationship was by phone calls and, hey, can we come see your farm? Can we come meet you, visit you? Starting on a personal front before we get to the business of selling to schools. So that's how we've been getting on. These relationships include talks of either forward contracting, the ability to place on-demand orders direct to the schools, and farmers who we've established routines with and/or have placed standing orders with. So these six wonderful farms are Blackie's Farm, Willow Pond Farm, Springworks, Aquaponics Farm, Fairwind Farms, Liberation Farms, and Greenwood Orchards. Since the start of school year, we've also successfully integrated over 31 Maine produce and products into our school cafeterias. Produce include anything from corns to tomatoes to onions, squash, blueberries, eggs, watermelon. The list just goes on. And we've also been working on some special projects, like forward contracting with farms. And essentially, what that means is they are going to plant for us now, starting in January and February. We're going to be able to watch our seeds grow into vegetables and track the whole process. And as soon as the veggies are ready, they get harvested and they get directly dropped to the school. So that kind of chunk of land on their farm is for the Auburn School Department, which is really cool to be able to do that. So we've been working with between three to four farmers on forward contracting. And this is in preparation for our summer processing for school year 26. So the farms we're collaborating with right now are Blackie's, Fairwind Farms, Liberation, and Willow Pond, which is very exciting. I just wanted to give a few examples of some successful food integration in Auburn. This is Willow Pond Farms, right here in Auburn, down the road. We went down and met Charlie there, purchased a couple of crates of apples at the beginning of the school year. We did a little treat for the kids and did some local apple crumble, which the school staff. This is prior to us getting our processing equipment. They did this all by hand. It was not an easy task, but it was really amazing. This is another fun one, cauliflower from Fairwind Farms. We did a buffalo cauliflower taste testing. It went very well, and we ended up menuing it for the kids, so they really enjoyed that. We were very surprised by how much they can handle spice in this area. It was like a challenge. Some of them were like eating six at a time. We went to Springworks, and after a lovely tour, they convinced us to successfully swap out our lettuce in our salad bars. So instead of your generic school lunch iceberg lettuce, we now have this beautiful Romaine lettuce heads, which are grown in Lisbon, which is great. This is another great example. This was just last week. They made a local beef stew. We've got the beef coming from Cardwell Farms, carrots from Belange's, and the potatoes from Bell's Farm, which is very exciting. We've been conducting a lot of taste testing to just engage the students, create more buy-in when we start to throw some of these veggies on the menu. They're not shocked by it. We do these in alignment with the main harvest of the month. It's something that we have pledged to as a department, to each month feature a specific produce. It's in partnership with the Department of Education. So what we do is we test the product the month before, and then we menu it the month after. So in October, we did the buffalo cauliflower tasting at Washmont Elementary. This is in preparation for the December brassica harvest of the month. We taste tested 135 students, and there was a 76.4% positive feedback on cauliflower, so that was a win. Then we went on to do a potato soup sampling using Bell Farm potatoes in Auburn Middle School out of 135 students. There was a 95.42% positive feedback, so huge hit on that. And then recently, I think it was like last week or so, Fairview Elementary School, we did some local beets from Six River Farms in Durham, I believe. 204 students, 55.5% positive feedback. So that was right down the middle there. So that's been really fun. It's just been so important for us to collect feedback from the students when we're doing these changes in menu and menu planning. Future plans, we want to do it more frequently. We want to do more diverse taste tests. We do plan to kind of upgrade our experience. We want to have a nice little tablecloth and some signs saying like, this is where your produce came from. This is how many miles it took to get here. So just kind of creating like an experience where we show up in the cafeteria and everyone's like, oh, yeah, the food hub's here. We get to try something. So we're looking at doing that and creating, you know, stickers that the kids can wear, saying, I tried beets today, or I tried a carrot today, and stuff like that. That's cool. The new equipment is here. It's very exciting. We have our food processor installed already. The potato peeler is being installed, I believe, next week, I think around the 15th. And these are located at Auburn Middle School. We also have, within our partnership with Blackie's, they recently just purchased this, which is a squash peeler. So now we have access to this right down the road. We can purchase pre-processed squash, watermelon, cantaloupe, turnips, pineapple. So that's something that we were probably thinking about purchasing for the Lewiston School Department, but now we have access to it at Blackie's, so who knows? You might just use that. Yeah. So yeah, through this equipment, we're able to increase and process and store more local produce. Right now, we're kind of in the experimental phase. This equipment is very intimidating when you run into it. We are just getting in the practice of recording our successes and failures, doing trial runs on different vegetables, recording the best practices, just getting ready to be able to, this summer, start preparing to staff the train to use this equipment. We've been continuing on with, for some reason, oh, there you go, with some key partnerships and collaborations. As outlined in the grant originally, we're collaborating with the Good Food Council on their local food action plan, specifically on the initiative to increase scratch cooking in food in schools. We recently just started collaborating with Farm Drop. It's an online platform for ordering local food. And we're working with them to be able to develop their online software to be able to work for school nutrition directors, so schools can essentially start ordering produce online, direct from farms. Five Pillars Butchery, we're supporting their efforts in their Halal Ready Meal Program. Food Corpse, we've been partnering with them to increase the food education and support for the school nutrition directors. We have plans to hire three members for each of the districts for school year 26. We're continuing our relationships with Healthy Antiscoggin and the St. Mary's Nutrition with outreach and community engagement for healthy school meals, and then always working with our Blackie's Farmstead for the local aggregator, forward contracting and some light processing. Some exciting things that have happened recently. We got a visit from Congressman Jared Golden. Couple of key takeaways from his visit to Ever Little. He showed a lot of interest in supporting local food initiatives. He plans to show ongoing support and advocacy from his office. And we plan to keep his local staffer in the loop with the grant process as it develops. So that's a really cool relationship to have, and someone who wants to know more about the grant. So we're just going to keep his office in the loop. We also attended the Main Agriculture Conference in Augusta. Chris was a panelist there, and he did a session on collaboration with UMaine and the Good Crust. And we do have plans for, I believe, in 2026, to do our own breakout session in booth at the Agriculture Conference, which is exciting. We do have a new website for our project. It's a, the plan for it is for us to upload some resources and updates on the project as time goes on. But there's a QR code there if anyone wants to check it out. You can also find it on the school, Auburn School Department website, under the School Nutrition tab. So if you do, after this, want to go back and revisit what the grant's about, we have a couple of stuff and information on the grant and who's working on it. Throughout this process, we've been doing a ton of data collection and impact management. Our overall data collection methods include, we've been tracking the local food purchases. We've been tracking student feedback. We have a comprehensive farmer relationship management sheet, similar to like a CRM sheet, but we do it farmer-style. It's inclusive of tracking all of these forward contract plans and exactly when the harvest is and how many drops we're going to get into, what school, et cetera. And we've also been doing a cost analysis for food processing, so comparing like what it takes to, for us, the price of buying food and processing it, including labor versus just buying it from a distributor. So just looking at that, we've been using smart metrics to measure our success. And throughout the process, we've been collaborating with the Data Innovation Project, who's helped us to refine how we gather and analyze our data, which has been very helpful. Next steps, we are actively addressing ongoing challenges with our processing capacity, storage, and logistical planning. We are focusing on scaling up for the next year. We have summer processing plans in place. So essentially, we do plan to hire some of the staff who normally have the summer off and looking for some work. They're going to be working in the Auburn Middle School, processing food, which we will process, freeze, and then distribute throughout the school year. So this summer is kind of where it's all going to begin for us. We're obviously actively working on these forward contracting and working out how that kind of relationship works with the farmers and the process of that. Working on developing our staff trainings. We have Chef Sam coming to do some trainings during the summer and plans to work on some more future taste tests, collaborating in community events, and some educational outreach opportunities. That is all I have for today. Thank you so much for listening.
Great, thank you. It's super exciting to see how this is all coming together and to know that we have local foods being fed to our kids in school. I think that's great. Does anyone have any questions?
Not so much questions, but I love this. This is fantastic.
It's awesome.
Yeah, it's great.
So years ago, as a parent in the audience, I had spoken to the school committee and had asked why we, as an agricultural state, could not provide this kind of food to our students. And I was told, this can't happen, it's too hard. And to know that it can happen and that you're making it happen is phenomenal. And I just think that this is just a great opportunity, especially your taste tests, you know, introducing foods that some children may not have the opportunity to have tried before. I think that's great. I think it's amazing to broaden their palates, to broaden their world in what, you know, different foods, like a beet. You know, some kids may not have, eat beets, but I think it's great. And I'm just so proud that we're doing this, and of all of you, and thank you for, I know it's not easy. And thank you for, I know it's not easy. It's a lot of work. But your whole team, thank you for doing this. It's amazing.
Thank you.
So Lily, when you say that you're, you know, kind of working with this halftime, are you also working with Lewiston and Lisbon? You're coordinating the whole thing, right?
Yeah, I am. So I represent Lewiston and Lisbon as well. But obviously today, I just center focus on what Auburn's doing, but there's some amazing things going on with the other districts as well. So it is a full team, the four of us, Alyssa, Allison, Chris, and I work together regularly.
Thank you for all you're doing in both endeavors. Thank you. Calvin, did you have a question?
I was just going to say, just kind of from the student perspective, I've also noticed a difference in like the lunches. I've been getting better, especially on the days that, like you said, when I get the email. I get an email about like the special lunch days and I've really, it's been a great difference, so thank you.
Oh, thank you. That's wonderful.
That's great feedback. Anyone else have any other questions for Lily? Thank you, Lily.
Thanks.
Okay. Do we have a student representatives report tonight?
Yes, we do. Good evening, everyone. Here is the all schools report for the month of February, starting with Edward Little. Semester two has started and students are settling in with new schedules. The first report codes for semester one will be mailed home in mid to late February. Sophomores will be touring LOC soon to learn more about the programs firsthand. And guidance will be visiting students in classes after February break to prepare for course registrations in March. And currently, like Edward Little students who are current juniors and seniors who run LOC programs competed in the Local Skills USA competition during the first semester. And many Red Eddie's earned awards during the recent podium ceremony at LOC. Thirteen of those, thirteen Eddie's took on the gold and will be going on to the state level in March to compete. Currently in sports, multiple winter teams are participating in conference championship week. And then we'll go on to state championships in the next coming weeks. And then currently, right now actually, the Edward Little Girls Hockey Team is playing a quarterfinal game tonight at Norway Savings Bank. Like Lily just said, ELHS hosted the District Two Chorus Festival last weekend. The auditorium was filled and provided a live stream into the cafeteria for the participants to be able to watch the other chorus groups. We just had under fifteen hundred people at Saturday's performance, one that showcased the amazing talents of sixteen Edward Little students and our very own Colin Britt, who graduated in 'oh three as a guest conductor. Special thanks to Mrs. Brooks, Ms. Gardner, Mr. Buzzard, and Mr. Gatcombe for organizing such a great event. We were also fortunate enough to send eight Edward Little students to the District Two Instrumental Festival and five students to the All-State Jazz Festival. In May, five EL students will participate in the All-State Band Orchestra Chorus Festival at the University of Maine-Oregon. We are extremely proud of the accomplishments of our music program. And then finally, the ELHS math team is having a great year. Last meet, they took second and are currently in third place in the PiCon North Conference. Moving on to AMS. AMS also just completed the District Twos this past weekend, the course at the Donald M. Gay Performing Arts Center. And additionally, fifty-nine percent of AMS home rooms have earned perfect attendance this year. Good win there. My bad. Missed the photos, but this is Edward Little from the District Twos and this is also from District Twos from AMS. Moving on to Washburn. Washburn is wrapping up their winter kids competition. It has been a fun four weeks. The kids learned about the weather, hosted Channel Eight Weather Station, and had an amazing family sledding night. Walton has a fundraiser coming up with Burnt Ends on February eleventh from four to seven-thirty. Moving on to Shore Heights. Shore Heights will be having the first annual Family Book Club Night. Students and families will engage in literary activities and hear the first two chapters of the book that they will be reading this month, Mystery on Pine Lake. Later in March, the author Tammer White will come to Shore Heights and families will get to engage in activities centered around the book they read. Also, on February thirteenth, Shore Heights will be hosting the annual Love Bug Bingo. And here is. Keep forgetting the photos, but this is Washburn's photos. Moving on to Walton. On Friday, February seventh, Walton is hosting the annual Sweetheart Bingo Event. Walton is looking forward to this fun family event. Next week, from February tenth through fourteenth, Walton will be hosting the Scholastic Book Fair. We will also have a family breakfast on February thirteenth, which we are all also looking forward to. Also, this week and next week, Walton is participating in the Heart to Heart Week, where students spread kindness through the school by writing letters and notes to students and staff, which then get mailed and delivered daily. It's been lots of fun so far. Moving on to East Auburn. Recently, East Auburn Community School and Staff enjoyed a great night out together at Burnt Ends in Auburn. These wonderful family fun nights, sponsored by our PTO, provide us an opportunity to gather and enjoy some fun and great food together. A special thank you goes out to the wonderful staff at Burnt Ends for hosting us and donating twenty percent of the evening's proceeds. Back at school, students and staff have been busy during these cold winter days, keeping their brains engaged in lots of great learning. We are gearing up for our winter carnival, which has been unfortunately postponed from today to next Wednesday due to the cold temperatures. Nonetheless, we are excited to be out in the snow as a whole school community and will share more photos soon. Finally, we have Park Avenue. At Park Avenue, kids have been enjoying the snow, especially the kids who, for the first time this year, are seeing snow. And the photo on the right is kids sledding, I believe, for the first time. And then also in the gym is a photo from kids and staff playing games for hitting their PBS goal. And that is all from me. Thank you, everyone, for listening.
Thank you, Calvin. Anyone have any questions for Calvin? Thank you. All right. Moving on to our superintendent's report, Dr. Doris.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Albert. First of all, I want to mention that the cybersecurity update that we had planned for tonight is going to be moved to February twenty-sixth as Mr. Robinson could not be with us tonight. And then for my update, I just want to provide you with an overview of where we are with our budget preparations. We have finished meeting with school administrators and directors and we're beginning to put together our budget notebooks for all of you. I want to draw your attention to the month of March because that's when we'll pass out the budget books. And on the March fifth meeting, we will be looking at Cost Center One. And this will be all of the school budgets and this will be regular instruction. And then you can see we're meeting weekly during the month of March. So March twelfth will be Cost Center Two, which is special education. Cost Center Three, which is CTE, which is career and technical education. And that's a new addition this year. Cost Center Four, which is other instruction and athletics. Cost Center Five, which is student and staff support and curriculum and instruction. And then moving to March eighteenth, we'll be doing Cost Center Eight, which is transportation. Cost Center Nine, facilities. And we'll be sharing our capital improvement plan with you and reviewing debt service. On March twenty-sixth, we will be talking about adult education and reviewing our revenue with you. And this will also be a snow date for presentations that we might miss in the event that we have a snow day. And then April second will be a school committee public hearing on the budget. And April seventh will be a joint school committee city council budget workshop. Are there any questions about our calendar or budget development?
Jay.
Yeah, I'm noticing March eighteenth. That's a Tuesday. Is it supposed to be March nineteenth or?
It should be a Wednesday, so thank you very much. Good catch. We will correct that.
Yes, every Wednesday in March, we get to spend lots of time together, so.
And that's all I have for updates tonight.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Doris. The only update that I have from my chairperson's report is that we have, or I should rather say that Mr. Anear has been busy pulling together our facilities standing subcommittee that we will have moving forward. And we have our first meeting scheduled next Thursday at five PM here on the fourth floor. And we are looking for a parent volunteer, parent participant for that committee. So if there's any parent out there who is interested in joining the facilities, the standing facilities subcommittee, please reach out to either myself or Mr. Anear. Do we have a city council update tonight, Adam?
Thank you. No, not much of an update, other than just to remind the board that the city's budget process also begins in March. My understanding from the presentation on Monday is that unlike last year, where the city council actually met weekly in last March, we're not going to do that this year. Because we have no new programs or services at the city level, we'll be meeting bi-weekly in our workshops to go over budget. So as you guys follow along, I believe that's our schedule. And obviously culminating with the school on April seventh at the joint school and council workshop.
Great, thank you, Adam. So moving on to our committee reports, there was a policy subcommittee on January twenty-first, which I think we will wait and have any discussion about the minutes from that when we get to our new business. The curriculum subcommittee just met tonight. So we'll have minutes from that meeting at our next meeting. And then the Health and Safety Subcommittee met on Monday, and so those minutes will be linked at our next meeting. And then again, the facilities subcommittee is starting next Thursday. We do not have any old business tonight, so moving on to new business, I will entertain a motion to approve policy AUB JJE, student fundraising activities for a first reading. Do I have a motion? Pat?
Second.
Pam? Any discussion, can someone from the policies subcommittee give us an overview of this policy and the recommended changes?
I don't think there was many changes in that one. It was just a little bit of word realignment and just going to the MSA.
I think that we added the words crowdfunding platforms because I think it had just said, there's one that was.
Yeah, previously it just said GoFundMe.
So we just added some others and another suggested one we added was Snap. And.
So it's just making it more general to crowdfunding platforms in general.
And brought it up and put some newer things in it. So there was no really essential change.
It's just to open it up and then expand it to other crowdfunding platforms as opposed to limiting it to GoFundMe. Okay, and then a couple other minor wording changes, it looks like. Okay, so seeing any other questions, discussion? Okay, so all of those in favor of approving policy AUB JJE, student fundraising activities for a first reading? Motion carries. I'll entertain a motion to approve policy AUB GBJC, retention of application materials for a first reading. Do I have a motion? Corinne? Second, Pam? And then quick summary of changes on this policy.
I think we just changed it a little bit to keep the records longer, three years, just to be safe.
Okay.
Yeah, just in case there's discrepancies.
And it looks like maybe alignment with.
MSA.
MSMA policies, okay. Any other questions, discussion on this? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving policy AUB GBJC, retention of application materials for a first reading? Motion carries. Okay, we have our list of upcoming meetings. The only one that is not included is next Thursday's facilities subcommittee, which is on February thirteenth at five PM. Do I have any future agenda items or requests for information? Okay, and I will just make a quick note again, just a reminder that our next regular school committee meeting is on the twenty-sixth, which is the fourth Wednesday of the month because of school vacation. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Corinne, do I have a second? Pam, all those in favor? And we are adjourned at six forty-four. Thank you, everyone.